Call to order for the Watertown City Council meeting for April 1st of 2024. Please rise while Hank Rosso leads us in prayer.
Thank you for joining me. Our Heavenly Father, as we come to you this evening, we thank you for this time for getting together. Lord, we thank you for our common bond, the love of we have for our community. God, I thank you for each one that serves, sometimes sacrificially, those among our first responders, the police and the fire department, our paramedics and EMTs. And God, we also appreciate so many others that help with the structural system and the things we need so much, and we're grateful for each one who serves. God, we ask your hand upon this meeting tonight. We pray that you provide wisdom and understanding and a common unity in the things we agree upon. Help us to focus on that. And finally, God, we understand in this community, even as business is conducted tonight, there are people here and they were hurting, lonely, and some of them are in a deep need. We pray for those as well, that you administer to them. We ask all these things in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Thank you.
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Beeler? Absent. Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Yep.
Jerrance? Absent?
Nope, Jerrance is online.
Oh, is he?
Here.
Here, okay. Peters?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair will now entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda with actually no changes. So, so, motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. And just make sure the green button is on and introduce who you are.
Well, thank you, everyone, for having me here. My name's Sam Jacobson. I'm a coach for Condon County 4H Shooting Sports. You know, seven years ago, eight years ago, before I started shooting sport, being a coach, I would have never guessed that I would have found myself sitting in front of city council, county commissioners, making speeches in front of various organizations. The impact that this had on my life is, you know, it's put me out in the, in front of the community in ways that I never would have expected. So, thank you so much for taking a few minutes to listen to me here. So, as a coach for Condon County 4H Shooting Sports, we help teach children life skills by doing. So, primary, first and foremost, is safety. So, we teach children how to handle firearms and archery equipment safely, safely. With that, as they build those skills, they also build self-worth. They learn to do things and control their mind and think in ways that helps build these skills that affect them going forward in their life. It's a program unlike anything else that I've ever been involved with. I didn't have that opportunity when I was growing up. I played football, I played, you know, various sports like that. I got bad ankles, bad back, you know, some concussions from those sports, and really, they did not do anything to set me up for future life goals. Shooting sports, though, is something that is, it's a, it's really a lifelong activity. And so, now we have the opportunity here with the new ice arena coming up and running, the old Georgie Mace Ice Arena, there's an opportunity here for us to help expand this program. Right now, we have about 80 kids in our program. That number's fluctuated over the years. The BB gun, air rifle side of things has grown substantially since I've been a coach. Starting seven years ago, we started out with like 18 kids. Now, we've got about 40 kids involved in that, in that program, in those programs. And there's a lot more potential for growth within our community. You look at other communities around the area that, much smaller counties, have programs of equal or greater size than what we have here in Watertown. So, the potential for growth is substantial, and our limiting factor on that right now is facilities. So, currently, we shoot in the bottom of the basement of the city auditorium, and then also in the sale barn of the Condon County Extension Building. You know, unfortunately, we don't have the opportunity to use the extension building like we could, but that is typically rented out to things like the gun show, farm show, home show. That building is really off limits to Condon County 4H. And so, what I'm just here is to ask you to pay attention to, you know, our program, know that we are doing some really good things. And, you know, as we start having future discussions, or as you start having future discussions about what's going to happen to the Georgie Mace Ice Arena, I think there could be a huge potential for us to help expand our program and have more outreach to other youth in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jacobson. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Hudson, come on up. You want to say something, too? Actually, you don't have to. I mean, it would be great if you did. And just identify yourself, say who you are, and...
I'm Hudson Cook. And it would mean a lot to 4H if we could have that ice arena, because the buildings we have now aren't really that big to do a lot of things. If we had more space, we could invite more people to do shooting sports. I think that, I think that everyone deserves a chance or opportunity to participate in shooting sports. Some people don't get to the, get the chance to at least try shooting sports because right now, we just don't have the space for more people to try, and we want more people to have the chance to do it. If we had the more space, we could host tournaments, which we have never been able to do. The 4H shooters have had to go to other towns and cities to shoot tournaments, and we could have the chance to finally host a tournament. When and if we had a tournament, we could be more comfortable shooting in our own building. I, I am a very skilled archer and good at air rifle. I've been with 4H for three years now. The first year I shot archery and was not near as good as I am now. The first year 4H, after the first year, 4H found my dad, Ryan Cook, skilled with adjusting bows, so now he is a coach for archery. On the gun side of it, the gun coaches have taught me gun safety, correct position, and to be a better shooter overall. I started with the BB gun, then trap, and then air rifle now. All of the coaches I have had are really great and kind. I have made quite a few friends, and I could have more and even invite people I know to shooting sports. I think that 4H has a lot of inclusion, and people will feel more included. As you can see, 4H means a lot to me, so if we could have the ice arena, we can make it a lot more happen.
Mr. Cook, thank you so much for testifying. I want to say thank you, and I would encourage other youngsters to also come forward to council. We like hearing all voices. Anyone else?
My name's Ryan Cook. I am a coach for Condon County 4H Shooting Sports. I do the archery side of things, and I just appreciate you guys' thought and time to think about a chance to use the Moss building, because where we're at now, we're so restricted, and we have to turn away kids every year because we don't have enough space. And some of it is safety, because we shoot in the basement of the auditorium, and there's steel poles that run down the middle of it. And we have had one archer, young archer, that missed the target and hit the pole and reflected back, so it's something we'll have to address. But if we had a more open space, we could include more archers, and it would be safer for us. And as a coach for the archery side, it's amazing to see that young kid, when he shoots his first bullseye, and he turns and looks at you with that great big smile. That is something he'll always remember, and archery is limitless, too, because you can go from beginner to all the way up to professional. There's plenty of people that shoot or have a chance at the Olympic team and beyond, so I, I just don't want to limit our kids. I don't want anybody getting left out either. So, if we could have more kids, expand the shooting program, and a big thing is, a lot of those kids, when they leave there, they learn respect for people and weapons and everything else where they might not have a chance anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also see Councilman Beeler has shown up. Is that correct? Yep. So, mark him present. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else who would like to testify on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Hearing no one else come forward, I'll close open forum. We'll go to item 9A, an approval of a bid award for the Wells Fargo renovation and addition for the new city hall to Huff Construction for a total of base bid and all alternates in the amount of $4,214,470. City Manager Mac.
Thank you, Mayor. We are excited to bring this in front of you all today. It appears to have been a rather long journey to get us here, but here we are. On March 19th, we received seven bids for the city hall renovation and addition. The bids ranged from 4.214,470 million to 5.3 million. The low bid was received from Huff Construction, which was 15.7% lower than the architect's estimate of 5 million and approximately $30,000 lower than the next lowest bidder. This includes the council chamber addition, as well as removal of the safe door and enclosure of the drive-through. We have additional information prepared to answer any questions you might have. So, with that, I will defer to Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director, if he has anything else to add. Otherwise, we will stand by for questions.
Director Von I, do you have anything to add?
I'm good with that. I'll stand by for any questions, too.
All right, council, I want to say that the suggested motion is to approve the bid award for the Wells Fargo renovation and addition for the new city hall, project number 2035 to Huff Construction for total of base bid and all alternates in the amount of $4, 214,470. Do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Tupper?
I would like to make a motion to accept bids without alternate GC1-1, which is the garage addition.
So, we have a motion to, basically, the, the motion would be to approve the bid award for the Wells Fargo renovation and addition for the new city hall to Huff Construction for, for total of base bid and all alternates without GC1-1.
So... If the award would not go to Huff Construction, if you remove the alternate, the, the award would go to Gray Construction and whatever the amount is, we can, we can pull that up.
Okay. So, we can't have a motion to, to award it to Huff unless all alternates are in there. Councilman Danforth?
We have the motion to, to, based on the items being quoted, to go to the low bidder. And we have it that way. It is what it is then.
I would also defer to City Manager Mac. I would, I would think that that would also...
At that point, correct?
I think so.
Could we get clarity on that ask? Please.
For me?
Yes.
Unless somebody can do a quick calculation...
Yep.
On if the garage isn't included, then somebody do a calculation on who that bid would be awarded to, that it could be placed in the, the motion.
Okay. Yes, by all means, ask a question.
Quick question, maybe for Councilman Tupper. What's the justification behind, maybe just state your reasoning behind your amendment here?
The actual need for it. I don't know if there is an actual need in my, my eyes anyhow. If there is that much of a need, I think with all the things that are in front of us right now, I would just soon see that get put into a CIP program and be done down the road.
And City Manager Mac?
I might make a suggestion. Do with it what you will. It may be easier, simpler for the conversation to discern out the need and/or value of the enclosure. If the motion is to approve what is recommended, and if the end of the discussion, you decide not to do that, you vote down the motion and then take up a subsequent motion to award the base bid to Gray Construction.
And I'm, I'm okay with doing that to hear the, because we have two, and just to make it clear, that wasn't actually even an amended motion. The motion was what Councilman Tupper said. It wasn't amended yet, because council has the right to make whatever motion we want. Just the suggested motion is what is suggested for us. It doesn't mean that we have to take it. Councilman Danforth also offered a suggestion that I think is similar to Councilman Tupper, but not identical by any means. And I think, but I, but I think what he's getting at is along the same lines. So, Councilman Danforth, are you okay taking up just the motion as is?
The argument really wasn't a motion.
Yeah.
More so than just adding clarity to, to Mr. Tupper.
Okay.
How to do it, because the question was whether, who was, who would get the bid then? I don't know that.
Sure.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
As far as, and I've been a lot of thinking about this this week, but I agree with Mr. Tupper's that, that it's 200 and some thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. Speak into the microphone, please. Sorry.
Yeah, that's a, forgot that one. You know, my thing is this, is it's probably, I would call it a nicety more than it is a necessity. We have a lot of things on our plate, and we're trying to figure out how to fund these things. And where I think it would be nice in the buildings there, I just think, I don't think it's a, it's an absolute need that we have.
Okay.
And that's where I'm coming from.
And I just want to make it clear, we can't get into debate yet because we haven't actually even made a motion. So, I would just want to make it clear.
I do like your idea.
Anyway, I'd need a motion. So, I am going to suggest making the original motion, and then in the course of our conversation, if we want to amend it, then we will amend it after that. Is that okay?
That's a good way to do it.
Okay, we have a motion for the original from Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. So, with that, now we are open up. Let's, let's start with questions, council. Questions first. I will, of course, allow comments, but questions, by all means, are encouraged. Councilman Danforth?
Can we ask from the public? Because we've got Tad's here, right? That, I mean, is he able to?
I would say first, go through City Manager Mac, but by all means, we have resources out in the audience that can definitely answer to the question as well. But first, address it to the city manager, and then if she would like to boot it down, or if you are still, if you would like further clarification or input from the people in the audience, then by all means.
Okay. What I would, would, I'm trying to understand that if this, if we were, if the garage didn't exist today, would we be spending any money on a garage? And if we were, from an architectural and engineering standpoint, site plan standpoint, where would we be putting that? That's a question I do have.
So, I can't, I can't speak to the site plan portion of your question, and some of that is a what-if, if it weren't there. But I can speak to the fact that two mayors ago, significant work was done to design a new city hall facility, which included enclosed storage for city vehicles. Additionally, there was work done with the developer of the ruins to look at incorporating city hall into that space, and it also included indoor storage for city hall vehicles. The enclosure of the drive-through space has been part of the discussion since the building was purchased. Also, all of the recent city facility projects, with the exception of the library, have included enclosed storage for city fleet vehicles. So, it is a standard that we've set across the city to bring our vehicles indoors. One, for the longevity of the vehicles. Two, it does provide better operations, while different, more, anyway, operations are a little smoother. And third, it provides not only protection from the elements, but protection from the public with our vehicles. And currently, with the city hall fleet, we have several from our engineering staff and IT staff who have quite a bit of equipment that they use out on site, whether they're working on computers and technology, or they're out surveying, that they're then carrying in and out of the vehicles every time they're in, largely because that stuff is expensive, and we don't want it to be at risk. But to where we would put it on the site if it didn't exist, I can't speak to that. I don't know if Mr. Holt would have additional information. If so, please feel free to chime in.
Councilman Danforth, the floor is still yours, and if you would like to ask that question to someone else, you sure can.
Well, meaning...
If you would like.
Okay. I'm gonna call you Tad, because I'm not sure, is it Holt, is an H-O-L-T? All right, Mr. Holt. Where would we put a building like that if it was a, if it wasn't there? Would it be where we're suggesting is now? And the second question I have really is, is that building, being there today, is that prohibiting or driving, is it prohibiting what we would otherwise do in regards to the addition onto the building? Is it driving any design differences than if it wasn't there?
Come on forward, Mr. Holt. If, if you're going to answer it. And just identify who you are and who you're with.
I'm Tad Holt, TSP Architects and Engineers. The first question about where would it be, we never investigated it as a demolish and relocate option, so I really can't talk much to that point. Other question, does it affect the addition?
Is it affecting the design, its location? Is it having any effect on the design for the addition that we're putting on the building?
It had a slight effect, mainly the tunnel going to it. We, the addition is kind of extending over top of the tunnel, and we had to do some foundation adjustments right there. But other than that, that really was the extent of how it affected the design of the addition.
Councilman, the floor is still yours, unless, I think Councilman Peters has a... Okay, Councilman Peters?
Tad, quick question. If we were to move the, remove the garage, what does it do to the base bid number? Does it do anything to it? Was, were these bids sent in? You mentioned foundation with the idea that this garage is going to happen, even though it's bid as an alternate. What would that do to the base bid number if it was to be rebid without the garage? Just help me understand that. Would it go down, the base bid number? Would it stay the same?
City Manager Mac, if you would like to answer that?
Sure. So, the base bid is what it is. So, it was the, I'm sorry, I got the wrong screen here. The base bid is 3.9 from Huff Construction. The base bid from Gray, I can pull that up as well, the base bid from Gray was 3.899. And so, the alternate from Huff is 266,600, and from Gray is 340,000. So, the, the alternate doesn't have anything to do with the base bid, other than who it gets awarded to. I don't know if you have something to add.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Peters, the floor is still yours? Councilman Beeler or Councilman Jerrance? I know you're online, but if you'd like to add something, by all means.
I'd like to chime in if I could.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would, you know, I've thought about this long and hard as well. I think, to me, it makes sense. We've got the building there, we've got the tunnel structure in place. That would allow the employees to go in and out of there during whatever kind of weather we're experiencing, but I think it would benefit us to keep those vehicles out of the weather, and especially the folks that are going in and out throughout the day, code enforcement, surveyors, and they could keep some of their equipment out there as well. I think it, to me, I think it goes along well with that project.
Anything else, Councilman Beeler?
That's all I got for right now. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Jerrance, did you have something?
I'm just doing some simple math. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for taking this through Zoom. I'm just doing some simple math on the, the difference in for $300,000 difference, which is a, is the, the difference between going with the full project versus just the base. I believe we can move a lot of snow. I believe we can, I believe we can visit this down the road as a viable option, but I'm not ready, in my opinion, I'm not ready to move forward with that. I just, just not comfortable with an extra 300,000 right now in sacrificing that when we have a city street department facility, we have an east side fire department, we have, just, I'm comfortable with doing what we need to do today. If, and not that negative feedback, but I've taken feedback from, and asked for feedback from, from citizens and from those that, that, that watch what we're doing, and I can't see that this is a necessity, and really for those that, it, it just doesn't make sense right now. So, I think I'm, I'm on hold right now, and if my math is wrong, if 300,000 is off, please correct me. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. City Manager Mack, would you like to add something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we did get questions from council members last week leading up to this meeting that I'd like to have an opportunity to answer. So the first question is, what is the approximate cost to demo the canopy, drive-through, and the teller structure if we decided not to utilize that? And the estimate that we got from Tad and his crew at TSP was 30 to 50,000, depending on tunnel and maybe more than that. We aren't quite sure. And then the cost estimate to build a new similar-sized structure. And so for a structure of similar-sized construction and appearance, they're estimating 575,000 to 625,000. So the, the bid for enclosure, which is a custom brick-looking EFIS on the infill to create a similar look with the real brick areas and trying to keep the cost down, is 266,000. So in addition to the 575 on the low end to build something new, you would add another 30 to 50,000 minimum to tear the existing one down.
Anything else? Councilman Shuddy?
Do I have a follow-up, please?
First, I have to allow Councilman Shuddy the ability to speak first before someone else speaks a second time.
Sounds good.
Sorry, Councilman Jurens. Thank you, Mayor. Well, most of us here have, you know, with our own homes. I know I personally have, I don't have a garage, and I just have just a back little driveway, which isn't really advantageous. I typically just park on the street. So all winter long, for years, I've been scraping and getting the snow off the vehicle and everything. And it's just something that I guess I've gotten used to. But if I could have a garage, I sure would appreciate it. And I guess I just wonder, one thing that was brought up was nicety versus necessity. And I guess, maybe this is an assumption, but I would bet every other councilman, for example, tonight here making this decision probably has garages with their homes. And I'm just curious, if you think about it, what's your, what's the point of putting a garage on your home? What was your reason for doing it? I mean, when you did, did you think about saving, I don't know, $100,000, $50,000 to not have a garage? Or was that even a thought? The purpose of a garage is to protect the vehicles, as has been mentioned here. But even, and we mentioned snow removal, what's the value of, of snow removal? I could, I mean, I'm just picturing, let's say if we kept the facility there and just parked them underneath the shelter a little bit. You still got to try to pull them out over the vehicle, the fleet, over the drifts, to get them out of the way, pack it down. Then you got to scoop it all out and put them back in. Where if they're enclosed with garage doors, and you just can scoop the snow right out in front of it, you know, use the tunnel, get out to the vehicle, the time of employees going to, you know, getting the vehicle ready to go in the wintertime is going to be, that's going to be a lot better than, I know what it's like. Because I go out every, that's what I do in the wintertime. I got to de-ice the vehicle and get the snow off. And, and for the sake of time of employees and, and, you know, being good stewards of that, I can see the value of the garage. So just looking at it from that perspective, I don't, I mean, I just, I don't think we make decisions on our homes this way. I think we decide to build a garage most every time. So there's that. Just looking at the cost of the demo and potentially new, if we, some have said visit in a few years. Really? Are we really think we're going to visit this in three years? I doubt, especially if we've got a, if we've got a street department project going up, potentially. East Fire Station's been brought up. As we discuss those, I think it's going to be hard pressed to justify five, six and a half million dollars for, for a garage at a, at a city hall in three years, five years, eight years. So basically, this decision today is, in my opinion, is saying, oh, nope, we're not going to do it. Plus, it wouldn't be fair to the, to the, to the low bidder if we do it in one year or two years after, you know? So I mean, honestly, we got to, you know, make sure, it's just that, that we're just thinking of every perspective. The other thing would be that I guess I was thinking about here was...
Tupper brought up, I had a similar question, because I wasn't here when we purchased the building. So there's a couple of things. First, when the building was purchased, the assumption was that the renovation was going to happen pretty soon thereafter, which meant that a general contractor was going to take over that site and wouldn't have access to it anyway. Secondly, we do park some city vehicles under there, but people are coming and going quite often. Third, proximity to the entrances of the building is, is part of why we haven't shifted the entire fleet over under the canopy. Our IT director's in the back, he just was texting me, I know this inherently, but you don't think about it until it's brought to you. Like, they're carrying computers and stuff in and out of the rain and snow. And so being as close to the door as possible is incredibly valuable, not just for our employees, but for, for the equipment and such that they are, that they're, they're using. So it's, it's not a, hey, this is a shiny, nice thing we could have when we do the new building. There, there is some rationale behind why the vehicles are still parked where they are. And until we owned the Wells Fargo property, we didn't have, I mean, that property comes right up to the edge of this building. So we didn't have any of that parking along this building either. And some of it is just, I guess, being creatures of habit. So the vehicles that we aren't using every day, maybe we could have parked under there permanently, but we didn't. And some of that, again, goes back to timing. Whenever this facility is going to get renovated and done, we don't have access to the site, so we got to move all that stuff in. But one, at one point, I did want to make clear, because I've kind of, no one's directly asked me this, but I've kind of heard rumblings, no personal vehicles will be stored in an enclosed garage. And it feels sort of silly to have to say that publicly, but, you know, we don't store personal vehicles at the fire department, or the police department, or wastewater, or the airports. So these are for city vehicles. We have 10 within the city hall fleet. It would hold six of them. And so we would cycle, kind of like we do with cold storage and heated storage at street facility. We'd cycle in and out based on seasons and, and what's appropriate. So that's the rationale, the best rationale that I can provide to answer your question, Councilman Tupper.
I'd just like to say something. I got a text from someone in the public saying that we lost our connection.
Oh, it's back now.
Is it back on?
It should be back.
Okay. So thankfully, but, and then it's also being recorded, so it would be rebroadcast in entirety. Okay, thank you. Councilman Tupper, the floor is still yours?
Just a couple of clarifications, possibly, City Manager Mack, or maybe not clarification, but questions. Is the tunnel still going to go to the drive-through?
Yes.
Okay, so?
Yes.
So when they park their vehicle, and they got their equipment, they're going to bring it through the tunnel, you know, to weather?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, one thing that we, maybe Director Vannai can, can answer, part of the design for the enclosure was to create some locker space in that drive-through area to store the equipment. And I'm not sure if that's not fully enclosed, if that's still desirable from a safety and, you know, well, we can see on our stuff perspective.
Any other questions? Is that going to be heated?
No.
Yes. So the original design called for cold storage, but when we went through this second iteration of design, it was found to actually be more cost-effective, because you didn't have to put the footings as deep if we went with heated storage versus cold storage.
Thank you. Councilman Peters, you have been waiting patiently?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I would say ditto to Councilman Beeler and Councilman Shuddy. This one kind of caught me by surprise. I understand the, the reasoning behind it. I get we're being fiscally conservative. I'm trying to fancy myself as a conservative looking at this, but for 6.8% of the overall cost of the construction to put a garage on, I think it was made, the comment was made by Councilman Shuddy that if we vote no, we're essentially today, we're voting no for the foreseeable future. I, I don't see us coming back, and I'll probably be off the council at that time, and saying, hey, we're going to put a garage up for city hall. I think that'd be a very hard case to make in, in not just do it right now. So, you know, Councilman Jurens, it said the city's heard feedback, and I've heard feedback from the community as well. And the feedback from the community is make a decision on city hall. And it's make a decision yesterday. So I fully intend to vote yes on the whole package tonight, so we can move on from this and continue to do the work for Watertown, because staff has spent plenty of hours on this, council has spent plenty of hours on this, for $266,000 for a garage. I think that's absolutely justified. So I'm going to be yes.
Councilman Jurens, you're on, and I just want to say, still getting a note that we're still not connected, but...
I feel connected. I respect Councilman Peters' remarks. Respect Councilman Shuddy. 266, but I have this as a gap of over 300,000 for a garage. And I know it's 6.8%, but 300,000 in the eyes of most people to, to, to build out a garage is, it's just not, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me right now. So tonight, I will be voting. I do believe it's time for a city hall. I will be voting for the base without the garage, and I will support the anticipated alternative motion.
City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to provide just some, a pseudo-legal opinion, only because our attorney is not here. She was texting me and said I could, I could say that as it relates to the bids. So should you choose to not award what has been recommended? One, you cannot change order in the garage in, in the future. And two, you would need to wait by her limited research right now, at minimum a year before you rebid the garage, so as not to set ourselves up for issues with bidding process.
Councilman Jurens, did you get the floor that you wanted?
Yeah, I have no problem with those legal issues.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel, comments?
Mayor, if I might?
Yeah, Councilman Beeler?
Man on the screen. No, I just, just want to iterate too that, you know, I think this would be beneficial certainly for the employees that work there, that are in and out throughout the day, you know? And we've talked about the vehicles. I think it's going to be better. We have storage for vehicles. We're trying to build storage for our street department eventually. So we have all those vehicles indoors. I think that, that helps sustain those for, for a longer period of time. But again, equipment storage, just overall cost for them having to scrape or, or, or clean, I think all those things come into play. I think I, I personally will vote that we do stay with the original bid.
Thank you. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as myself as well, the, the city employees, you know, having the proper resources for different departments around the community, now we're talking about city hall, and the employees of city hall, having the proper resources, the proper building, the proper, just everything that comes into play, it, it's just, for me personally, it's a challenge to, to say, hey, we have a chance to give them, again, to better the facility, to be able to do their job, and we're going to just fall a little short. So I mean, I'm not saying that's what everybody's looking at that way. They just may be looking at dollars, but I'm looking at the value of those dollars, is what I'm looking at, and the value as far as what that will do, not just for the, the metal and plastic of vehicles, you know, protecting them, but for the employees as well, to, just looking at the value of these dollars, what it is going to do for the employees. So I just, that's why I'm going to vote for this with every alternate as well, to move forward for the betterment of, of the city and for the city employees.
And I'm just saying, I am, I'm not weighing in on the topic of the garage, because my vote is going to come on the entirety of the project, not on the garage. And I will explain that later. Is there anyone who would like to speak before Councilman Peters speaks a third time? Councilman Peters?
Just a quick question. So looking, looking down, and I have no idea how my fellow council members are going to vote, but what happens if, if we, if the vote is tied either direction? Where do we go from here? What happens next?
You're all set.
Maybe to add a little bit more context. So let's say we vote for, we vote for the current proposal, and it's then shot down. And then we, we bring forward the subsequent motion that Councilman Tupper made, and that is then shot down. Then where do we go? I'm just trying to understand this.
I, I don't know if you can reconsider a motion. You'd have to make notice that you want to reconsider a motion at the next meeting, right?
So right now, what it is, is we have the motion, which is the original motion that is on our sheets, which is basically to award the entirety of the base bid with all alternates. That is the motion on the table. We don't yet have, we don't have an amendment offered yet. Now, that might come. And at that point, we will discuss just the amendments, whatever that might be. Yeah, just a second. So, and then the amendment will receive its hearing and then receive a vote, a vote up or down. And then whether or not that amends the original motion or not, we go back to whatever that emotion, original motion is, whether that is original motion as amended or original motion. But it will go back to basically award the bid.
Okay. You are the king of parliament here, so...
Councilman Tupper?
Okay.
I'm going to clean this up a little bit. I'm going to rescind my, my alternative motion. Okay. Councilman Danforth, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm, I came in here with, with the notion that I was not going to support. I, I fully, fully believe in the efforts that we're taking to improve the Wells Fargo building. I know this building all too well. That's beautiful, all of us. It's time, and it'll get great opportunity in front of us. So I never questioned my mind about this. If you look at, at this building, and I'm just going to use Mr. Holt's estimate, I mean, if it's even, even thing remotely close to 575 to 625,000, plus you got to add 30, 40, 50, 60,000 to, to remove it, it'll never, ever happen. It's just not going to happen. I do see it as a nicety, but I understand where it, there is that, there is value to it. Okay? Both from an employee standpoint and from a, an equipment standpoint. So coming in here, I was a no on the, on the garage. And I think, based on things right now, based on going on the numbers, I, I struggle with what that estimated, estimated number is as far as building new and such. But when I had to question that, I guess I don't have the rhyme and reason. So based on the discussion, I, I'm now going to be in support of the garage. And I know that I've talked to some of my fellow council members. I hope they understand where my position is, because prior to, 20 minutes ago, my position was no on that. So that's where these discussions are good. And, and I appreciate the opportunity to have those discussions, so.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for, for Tad, if that's possible. Can I ask a question?
Mr. Holt? Okay, he's here.
Okay, thanks. Tad, I know that there was some large electrical conduit that runs through that tunnel. When you estimate the, the demo, are there going to, I would assume there'd be some costs in rerouting or, or doing something with all that conduit. And I think there's a big electrical panel in there as well. Is that true?
You are correct. There's, yeah, a lot of conduit and a panel on the, and closest to the drive-through.
You know, and, thank, thank you. You know, and thank, thank you, Ted. And, and I might just add too, you know, to keep people out of the weather, that, that tunnel is great. I mean, it's right there. It's already in position. The structure there at the, at the front end where the tellers were, that's already in place. Uh, again, that might be a good safe storage for, for things, equipment that they need, so. But I'm, uh, fully in, in, uh, agreement that we should stay with the, the bid that we have right now. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll, basically, there was never an official amendment made, but let's move off the garage and just the bid, the, the original motion, which is the bid with all the base and all the alternates. So any questions or comments upon that? And first off, I'd also like to apologize. I'm still getting some notification that there is problems with the connection with the feed online, whether that be in audio or video. And I apologize, uh, we are doing the best that we can, and it is being recorded, so it will play back at some time in the future, so you will have your chance to see what we are talking about. But I apologize for that right now, and I've been asked to summarize it, but there's really no need to summarize it if you can't hear my summary, so. If no one is, if no one can hear the summary, then there's no reason to try to summarize it. Otherwise, everyone's gonna have to go back and watch the recording anyway. These things happen. And
The audio should be working.
Okay, the audio should be working now. Yes. Okay, uh, so we are on the, we have basically, for anyone watching, if the audio is good, we have been talking about the garage alternate, which is G C one dash one, which was basically, we were talking about, do we push this back and take that on at a certain time in the future? Or try to do it now? The discussion has gone on for quite some time and is, I don't wanna speak on behalf of everyone, 'cause it's not an official vote, but the two proposed amendments have been rescinded. We are on back to the original motion, which is to approve the base bid with all alternates. Any comments or questions on that?
I have a comment, Mayor, if you have room right now.
Yeah, Councilman Jerrance?
I believe, uh, pretty, previous city council, previous city, um, planners, it is looking to me like the purchase of the Wells Fargo is much criticism as there has been in, in the community for this. This is really looking to me to be some really, really solid planning to, to repurpose a very solid building, a very good-looking building, uh, to provide a safe environment for employees versus the situation we have right now, which is incredibly unsafe for those in the public that have never been in our current City Hall. There is nothing in today's environment, in today's social media buzzes and getting people upset about stuff that we shouldn't be upset about, but it's been a place where, uh, you know, safety is, I, I just have read some comments, uh, since the last news came out about City Hall looking for something positive, and it turns so negative and so quickly. Uh, I would just like to go on the record and say, this isn't, um, this is really, really good for our city to get a major project that's been on the books and been working on for twenty years. It's got to get done, and right now is the opportunistic time to do it. So I'm a big supporter of the City Hall and where it's going and the location and what it's going to do for, uh, employee morale. You know, today, to keep employees and to attract new employees is tougher than it ever has been. Uh, those of us that have been in business for some time have never seen it this way. So big supporter of City Hall. Thanks for, uh, you know, getting this to this point tonight, everybody that's been involved.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, and agreeing with Councilman Jerrance, I was one that was open to vetting other options. Uh, there's, there's other options we've discussed publicly. We had ideas, you know, ourselves personally behind the scenes, and I was very open to that, um, to see what else. Even though the previous council before I was on this, you know, I purchased this building and, and, and seeing it as a good fit, we paused, of course, to, to evaluate all options, as you probably sometimes will do with a newer council, right? 'Cause maybe there's another idea, another, other perspective that might, uh, be noticed. However, it seems like the other options just haven't seemed to, to come together. And this one just seems a kinda, is, appears to be falling into place. And yes, the building itself, I'm not no expert, but just enough, I know enough to, to know and talk with the right people. It is a very, it's a solid building. It is. We have a good facility there. Um, so as much as I was open, I was for the pause and evaluate other, other options. I'm moving forward just because this seems to be, this is the direction to go as a city, so.
And Councilman Tupper, before I let you speak, I'm going to speak simply because I am going to be a no vote, and I want, I'm okay with the final word on this being a positive vote, because I wanna start off by saying I totally re-understand why the vote is probably going to be six to one tonight, and I respect that because I totally understand the desire to put a check mark next to one other thing to get done in Watertown. Love that idea. I personally just can't get behind the vision. It doesn't match my vision for the future of Watertown or what I want for Watertown. I have always made that very clear, but at the same time, I hope that council has always understood that while I have never been a proponent of Wells Fargo, I have also not actively worked against it. I have been very open with everyone to say what my problems were with it. And, but at the same time, I voted in favor to take it out to bid, because I wanted to see what it was gonna cost, because we needed that information. I was okay with exploring the options as far as what those, what those bids might entail, because we needed that information. So it wasn't like I was ever trying to stop the process from moving forward, but at the same time, when push comes to shove and you are voting upon this amount of money into this building, I can't get behind it for a vision aspect. I will say, only Councilman Beeler and I were on the council when we voted to purchase this, and I will just speak for myself. I can't, I will not speak on behalf of anyone else. At the time, we were getting proposals for City Hall costing twelve million dollars upwards to that. And I had a hard time wrapping my head around that. So when an option for one point two million came on the books, and I thought, sure, that would buy us some time, five years, ten years, we could get out of this building, which is the number one reason why we are talking about a different City Hall. It is just to get out of this building. There are other things that we would want with the City Hall, such as return on investment, added value to downtown Watertown, pride and community. Those other aspects, return on investment, pride and community, I have a hard time understanding how spending millions of dollars in a fifty-year-old building gets us that. But it does accomplish the one thing that we most need, which is to get us out of this building to a place that's safe for health and safe for safety. So I totally understand that, and I totally get why every other councilman is going to vote for it. And I will also ask specifically to anyone out there on Facebook, do not think that I am backing up the negative talk against getting a solution done for Watertown. I am just voicing that you can have a difference of opinion and still be in favor of Watertown moving forward, even if it's not completely how you might envision it happening. With that said, when the cost came back at a very early time, so this is before any of the councilmen currently sitting here, when those costs started coming back and the scope of the project starting coming back a lot higher than what I was expected, what I expected, I started getting very uneasy in about it, because spending millions of dollars into a fifty-year-old building, no matter how nice it might be, is still spending a lot of money into a house or into a building that is that old. That is exactly what Watertown did when we purchased this building. It was a fifty-year-old building, and we purchased it, and look where it got us. I would like to learn from that and move forward. Now, I understand it's not apples to apples, but we would not have put ten million dollars in the Mace Ice Arena and replaced the ice arena. We would not put ten million dollars in the current street department and say we don't need a new street department. This isn't exactly the same thing, because it's not like putting ten million dollars into the current City Hall, but we are still putting a lot of money into an existing, very old building that was never designed to be a City Hall. And that's just part of my concern, so. However, when we start spending this much money, we are committing the city. We are basically saying, spending this much money, we are committing Watertown, that this is going to be our City Hall for my lifetime and probably for the lifetime of my children, because when you spend that much money, you're probably not going to back out. We already had a discussion about the garage, you know, along the same lines. Totally get that. Uh, that's, I'm just saying, that's an area where I'm uncomfortable with it. I'm okay if other people are comfortable with it. I don't have a problem with that. I will say, another thing that has caused me heartburn on this is we have had alternatives to the Wells Fargo building. We had, we had an offer for half a million dollars more than what we paid for it, where we could have sold it. We turned it down because we didn't have an alternate. We had an offer from a developer to put a hotel there. We turned that down. Now, in my mind, that brings much more value to downtown than a City Hall does. We could put City Hall on the outskirts of, of, of dom, of downtown. I'm saying as an example, we still, the city owns land where the parking is now next to the senior center. Granted, we would have to deal with parking, but we've always owned that land. That has always been an option for a City Hall. That would also help the connection with the county and the county courthouse that they have always desired. And I'm just saying, there are alternatives for it. I understand that ship has sailed, which is one of the reasons why I haven't said it. I'm just explaining to people why I can't get totally behind this. So with that, I wanna tell the staff, I want a different building for you. I want you to be safe. But I don't want to move you into a building that, five years down the line, we look at and say, you know what? We probably should have spent ten million and gotten a permanent solution rather than spend five million and get a temporary one. And I fear that we might be putting ourselves in that position. Understand totally if someone feels differently about it. And also to Watertown, I just wanna say that my vision is for the best of this community, because I think we are the best city in the Midwest. And my vision is not always for something new and not always for something, uh, expensive, but for a permanent solution, and I'm not sure that a fifty-year-old building is a permanent solution. However, with that said, I wanna say, tomorrow, when this vote goes against me, I am going to be a cheerleader for this, because the city of Watertown has to move forward. And finding solutions to something is a good thing for Watertown. So I will get behind this. I will advocate for it, still try to find the best City Hall that we can and move forward like that. And I want to say that as I, I hope that others can understand why I'm doing that. You can have a difference of opinion and still all be working towards the same goal. How you get to that goal doesn't have to be the exact same procedure. So I wanna say that to all my councilmen, totally, totally respect your vote. I know pretty much, I believe I know how the vote's gonna go, and I'm okay with that. But tomorrow, Watertown, we're gonna wake up, and if the vote is for a new City Hall, we're gonna go and we're gonna get that done, and we're gonna make it the best that we can for the future of Watertown. Councilman Beeler?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I ju, I just wanna say, you know, we, the council voted, and I know that we, this is like a broken record, but we all voted ten-nothing to buy that building. And we bought it, I think for a song. The location to me is perfect. We don't have to look for land. It's right there. That building is a solid building. I've been all through that place. I don't see anything wrong with that. You know, if we talk about a fifty-year-old building, how old is the goss? Look at the money that was put into that. Manufacturing facilities out by the airport, most of those are getting in that fifty-plus year. They're fine. There's nothing wrong with those facilities. I, I think it's a great structure, but we've screwed around with this thing for three years. And I think at this point, it's probably cost us another million, million and a half dollars to get this thing taken care of, because we did this. We had developers come in at zero hour to make this happen. I think if you're gonna build a new one, you're probably looking at ten million plus. Plus, we gotta find a location, and we'd have to have the property to do it on. So that's kinda my rebuttal to this thing. I think we need to get her done, get this thing done. We've been jacking around with this for so long, it's, it's, it's insane. Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
Well, a little bit on, on what the mayor said, and by the way, thank you, Mayor. That's the great thing about being in politics in a small community like Watertown, and such a great community like Watertown. I brought up a fact tonight. We've had some very, very good discussion about it. I'll leave here tonight with whatever the vote is, and with the utmost respect for my colleagues. That's just a great thing about, about being in, like I say, being in politics. I know me and the mayor spent, uh, good part of a afternoon driving around, looking at different locations when, when we weren't sure about Wells Fargo location, and we never really landed on anything that was solid enough without running into a roadblock. You know, and I think the people spoke earlier when we were looking about that in with the, uh, new street facility, that, that City Hall has to be downtown. I still wanna personally agree with that one, but I'll live with that, so. I agree, my, my thoughts tonight. I, I still not crazy about the garage, but I'll, I'm gonna support it. I have my reasonings for it, I guess, so. Probably better that we do it now than later, but, but, uh, like I say, I just, that, that's the thing about a Watertown. We can, we can sit here and have a great conversation, and this has been literally how many dozens of conversations over City Hall, where it should go, and, and even before my time when this building was purchased. I had that one, council bought it. Sound like a great idea, but, but, uh, I kinda live with wrong side of the mayor. I don't think it's a fifty-year solution. I think it's a twenty or thirty-year solution, and I would love to see a brand-new building, but I don't know if that's gonna work, so thank you.
Councilman Danfords?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Larry the Cable Guy for chiming in, uh, Mr. Beeler. But I, I wanna make something really clear from my standpoint, uh, and, and I'm just gonna say this because, and it's not doing anything other than clarity. I'm not supporting this to check something off and accomplish it. I'm supporting this because I've been through that building. I used to do business in that building. It's the right solution for us today, not a checklist issue in my mind. If, if it wasn't right, I wouldn't be supporting it. I, I assure everyone that. So, um, lots of reasons, lots of good reasons. Uh, that building will be there for a long time, supporting us. It's, uh, it's a good decision. It's a good direction to go.
Any further questions or comments? And Councilman Beeler, I will just say, I totally understand your passion about speaking on this project. I will choose to interpret your passion as the desire you have to find the solution for City Hall and not negative comments against me. But I will say that I think I made it clear in my comments that I was very respectful to everyone. I tried to explain why I think it is a good vote for people who can get behind it. I was not trying to demean anybody with that, and I wanna just make it very clear again that we can have a difference of opinion and still be working for the betterment of Watertown. That's all, I mean, that's all I'm saying. So with that, hearing no further comments, we're gonna go for a vote. All those in favor of awarding the bid award with the base and all alternates will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Apples or Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler? Beeler?
Aye.
Danfords?
Aye.
Colleen?
No.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item B, an approval of a bid award for the special payment for the Wells Fargo remodel for the new City Hall to Prairie Environmental Consulting Incorporated in the amount of roughly thirty-two thousand dollars.
Just a second. I'm trying to get to the right item. Thank you, Mayor. Before we get into this, if you don't mind, we do have a representative from Huff Construction here. Um, I, I don't know that they need to say anything, but just wanted to recognize that they're in the audience, and we look forward to working with them.
Would you like to say anything? Okay. Actually, you're going to be in the community for quite some time, so by all means. Well, introduce yourself and.
My name is Leroy Ask. I'm based out of Sioux Falls. I'm with Huff Construction, and I'm happy to, uh, be here tonight and really excited to get going on the project, so. You've, you've done a good job picking a great, um, architectural firm, in my opinion. I've, I've been in construction for almost thirty years, and they have a history of, um, very, very good track record of finishing, completing. and they have a history of very, very good track record of finishing, completing a lot of buildings. So, again, really excited, and can't wait to get to meet you and, and get going. So, thank you. Take your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ask. When, when do you think you'll start?
So, we'll be, uh, we'll be starting, there's, there's getting contracts in place, getting insurance in place, so there's mobilization. We've got to look at the schedule to get the superintendent. So, it'll be, I'm guessing if all things go well in the next month. I mean, we want to hit the ground running as soon as we can, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Congratulations. To Watertown proud.
Absolutely.
So, item nine B is an approval of a bid award for the asbestos abatement. Back to City Manager Mac.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, as part of the city hall project, we do have to mitigate some asbestos that is in the Wells Fargo's Fargo building. We received three bids, which, when we bid this initially in July of twenty twenty-two, we had one bidder, which was about two hundred percent higher than the current bid we have on the table today. So, we're recommending the award to Prairie Environmental Consulting in the amount of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you very much. Need a motion from the council? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Danforth. Open it up for questions and comments. Counsel? Anything? Anything online? All right, the motion is to award the bid for asbestos abatement to Prairie Environmental Consulting. All those in favor will say aye now. Aye?
Aye.
There was no opposing comment, so I have the ability to do that. Any opposition, say nay. Motion carries. Item C is an approval of a bid award for the two thousand twenty-four Park and Recreation Improvement Projects, project to Dunick Incorporated for bid schedules A, B, and C in the amount of five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. I may defer to our Public Works Director and Park and Rec Director for the details on this. What we have before you is three different park and rec improvement projects. The first is to fully reconstruct two roads within Mount Hope Cemetery. It's part of our yearly plan to improve the road conditions out there. The, they're being reconstructed out of necessity and to prevent the high cost to maintain them yearly. The second part of this project is the Olive Place Trail, which I, I couldn't give you the, the length of time that it's been in the works to complete that, but it has been on the list of projects for quite some time, which would install a new bike trail run along Fourth Street Northwest and Sixteenth Avenue Northwest to connect to the existing bike trail. And then the third part of this project is two inch asphalt overlay around, uh, on the existing bike trail along Highway twenty around Lake Canpaska. It'll start from the bike trail reconstruct that completed this, this past summer and is about ninety-four hundred linear feet. The schedule A is about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand over the budgeted amount. We would cover that excess just through the operating budget, or excuse me, through the capital budget. It would be absorbed. Schedule B is twenty-one thousand over the engineer's estimate, and we would fund that through the twenty-four budget savings that we've seen through different street bids and stuff that have come in quite a bit lower than estimated. And schedule C has been budgeted in the capital improvement fund, and we will be reimbursed a hundred ninety-eight thousand from the rec trail program grant that we were awarded in twenty twenty-three. So, staff would recommend approval of all three bid schedules, and I, and the much more knowledgeable team that I have will stand by for any questions tonight.
Do you want any, anybody else to add anything more?
If they have something to add, they should get.
All right. Need a motion to approve the bid award? Motion made by Councilman Shaddy, second by Councilman Beers. So, open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Tupper?
Just a question on A and B. Any reasoning why those came in so much higher than, than estimates? When, when most of the stuff we're seeing this year has actually been lower, but.
I'll defer to our Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilman. Um, I could only presume it maybe just has to do with the, the quantities. When you're dealing with this amount of quantities, they're, they're small enough that they're not huge quantities, and they're, yet they're big enough that they're not really small quantities either. So, it's kind of that middle range type of projects, a little bit harder to pin down the numbers when it comes to estimating. Sometimes we see these come in more like a larger project at fairly favorable pricing, and sometimes they come in a little higher, like a smaller project would. So, for no reason to know is I'd be presuming otherwise why they came in a little bit off.
I guess I didn't look at the whole thing. How many bids did we get on it? I can do that real quick, but. Just two, isn't there?
On the bid tabulation form, we're showing Dunick and J and J Earthworks is the two bidders.
If, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Motion is to approve the bid award for rep parks and recreation improvement projects A, B, and C. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Shaddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Jerrance? Jerrance?
He might have stepped away.
Okay, Peters?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries. Item ninety is an authorization for the city manager to award bid and sign a purchase order agreement with Danko, Danko? To build the firebrush truck that is in the two thousand twenty-five CIP fire budget. And that's Officer Bob Zine?
I mean, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will just say upfront that I cannot speak to the details of the truck. We have our fire chief and battalion chief here with us to give specific details about that. I will defer to them. Uh, so this project is scheduled in the two thousand twenty-five CIP budget. As we've seen with numerous pieces of equipment, particularly in public safety, the lead time for these, this equipment has become quite large. So, what we are asking is to move this project into twenty twenty-four. So, if, uh, because if we wait until twenty twenty-five, we will not receive the truck until twenty twenty-six. If we move forward with ordering it now, we will have the chassis delivered to us by the end of twenty twenty-four. We lock in twenty twenty-four pricing, and the final pieces will be put together and delivered in twenty twenty-five. So, we have this equipment in the scheduled year that we budgeted for. I gotta pull this up. I don't have the number in front of me. Uh, the total cost is a hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars. And then we have a trade-in. I'm gonna get this wrong. Ignore everything I've said for the last two minutes, minute. So, the, we are recommending awarding to Danko emergency equipment at a cost of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Sorry, very confused by all the numbers on my sheet. I will stand by for questions. If you'd like to hear more details about, about the truck, I will defer to Fire Chief.
City Manager Mac, just to clarify, is that one hundred and seventy-nine or total cost of one ninety-three?
The total cost of one ninety-three, eight twenty-five, that includes the equipment that goes on the truck.
Okay, and that would be with this?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make it, make it clear, because there's no price amount on the motion, so I wanted to make that public. So, there was a total cost. So, there's the bid price for the original vehicle, but then the equipment for the truck is another fourteen thousand five hundred. So, total cost would be roughly one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. I just wanted to make that clear, because that was not listed on the public motion. And wanted the public a chance to hear that. So, with that said, Chair will entertain a motion to authorize and authorize for the city manager to award the bid and sign a purchase order. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Shaddy. So, open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Danforth?
Okay, it doesn't say in here that this is being moved to the twenty-four budget. Only states that it's in. We really have no twenty twenty-five budget, because that hasn't been established yet.
Correct.
So, are we in fact moving this into the twenty? Should that be part of the motion?
Go ahead.
I mean.
So, what my plan would be is how I kind of do it either halfway through the year or at the end of the year, I'll make sure it's part of the budget supplement. So that the budget is in there, the budget authority is in there.
Okay, so, so everybody knows that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, I'll, uh, put a question. When is the last brush truck that we got? And what is it that wears them out that says we should get a different one?
I'll defer to Chief Roland on that.
Thank you, Councilman Danforth. The last, the truck that we're gonna be replacing is a nineteen ninety-seven Dodge truck. It's got miscellaneous equipment issues with it right now, as well as a transmission issue. So, we're on a twenty-year cycle. We tried to on the brush trucks. The last truck that we got was in twenty fourteen from Danko, and it's working quite well, actually.
Councilman Danforth?
I, I did not know we had two of them, Chief, so that the fact that this is the, because I knew it didn't seem like that long ago that we had gotten one, so.
It's, it's amazing how ten years goes by pretty quick, huh?
Yeah, when I'm thirty, that's, you're correct.
Councilman Danforth, did you think else at this time?
I'm, I'm not.
Okay, Councilman Tupper?
Just maybe for Finance Officer Bob Zine. Are we paying a whole hundred ninety-three thousand upfront, or in this, it says Danko requires upfront payment of chassis when it arrives. Plan delivery should be sometime in August. Payment for chassis is ninety-eight thousand eight twenty-five, or excuse me, fifty-eight thousand eight twenty-five. And that's gonna be supplemented into the fire department capital two twelve budget at the end of the year. Total cost is one ninety-three, eight twenty-five. And that's in the twenty-five budget. The truck will not be delivered until nineteen twenty-five, or excuse me, twenty twenty-five.
So, my suggestion will be that we will take and we will supplement the entire budget, or the one ninety-three, that's all in, right? Everything? Yep, so I will bring that forward, and then whatever is spent will carry over till twenty. If we spend some in twenty-four, they'll have the budget authority. We'll do a carryover for twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And cover the whole process of getting the.
Clarifies that then, because that's why I'm showing fifty-eight thousand eight twenty-five upfront, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Tupper, floor still yours?
You've wrote them. What, there is no trade-in on this, I see.
Yeah, this truck is probably got no value.
Yeah, what's your plans with it? Is it something that we could donate to one of the small apartments around us?
I'll visit with the county chiefs and see if they have any interest in it, yes.
But they're probably gonna tell you, no, you, you keep your own headache, or.
They're gonna say it's too old.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, the motion is to authorize for the city manager to award a bid and sign a purchase order agreement for the firebrush truck. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Shaddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Jerrance? Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. I think Councilman Jerrance is off for the rest of the night, so just wanted to make it sure. Item eleven A is an application for a new retail mall beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Hector Mesa Mesa, doing business as El Patillo Family Mexican Restaurant. We'll go to our finance, our city manager, Amanda Mack, or Finance Officer Kristen Bobzine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, item A and B, it's for the same company, El Tapatio. It looks a little weird. They've had a license previously. They did some changes with their sales tax license number and didn't make the connection with the actual liquor licenses. So, in turn, the state contacted us and said, the cleanest way to do it is to bring it forward as a new license. So, that's why you're seeing this as a new license instead of a transfer of ownership. So, otherwise, um, all notices have been in the paper and fees have been paid. So, if there's any other questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
All right, uh, just to let council know, I will open up items eleven A and eleven B for conversation and questions at the same time, but I will need a motion, but after I take a public hearing first. I will open up a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing. I will need a council action for approving the application. Motion made by Councilman Peters, second by Councilman Shaddy. Questions and conversation? Counsel? Councilman Tupper?
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Kristen. Because I thought we just did this here just a couple months ago. I was a little bit confused, but I thank you for clarifying that.
All right, any further questions or comments? Counsel, unless anyone objects, and once a roll call vote, I'm just going to call for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving this application, please say aye. Aye, opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item eleven B is an application for a new retail wine and cider license to Hector Mesa, doing business as El Patillo Restaurant. Finance Officer Bob Zine, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, I will open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on this? I'll close the public hearing. Take it up for council action. Do I have a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Peters. Any discussion or conversation on this? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the application. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Item twelve A is an application, or, sorry, an approval to reallocate fiscal year two thousand twenty-four solid waste fund capital budget savings and to proceed with the additional proposed capital improvements. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am going to rely on our Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director, Von I, to provide more details than I will. I just wanted to give some high level information on this item. So, solid waste is, as you all are aware, an enterprise fund, meaning it is, it is not supported by the general fund tax dollars. So, the revenue and such that is, is generated within that fund stays within that fund. Uh, and what has happened over the last several months is we've had a couple of items that were budgeted for come in significantly under budget. And now that we have a new superintendent out, out at the landfill, um, he's done some pretty good work on identifying, uh, capital needs out at the landfill. And so, what we're asking tonight is to reallocate the excess dollars that were not spent on the equipment that you all approved earlier this year, uh, to some of those landfill improvements, which include some updates to the administrative offices at the landfill and an asphalt paving project. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Keith to give you the background on the project specifically. But generally, we're asking to reallocate budgetary authority, uh, to spend on these projects that were not identified, uh, when we set the budget.
Director Von I? Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager Mac. The, um, the impetus behind these improvements really do boil down to a handful, five specific cap improvement expenditures in twenty twenty-four that have already been realized and, and incurred based on recent, um, purchase agreement, contract approvals at the council level. Those are listed in the, uh, the background and financial impact information in the council packet. We had a, a refuse truck, a garbage truck purchased this year, a new payloader, a new pickup, uh, for the landfill operations, a second new garbage truck, and then a compost turner. Every one of those purchases came in well under budget to the collective tune of nearly five hundred thousand dollars. There's a four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollar savings that was, uh, realized in the purchase of those pieces of equipment. The brunt of that savings, three hundred, over three hundred thousand of that came from savings on our compost turner. Um, I'm speaking from recollection, back when we awarded that bid, I think the budget was, I want to say six to seven hundred thousand, and we ended up purchasing a piece of equipment for about half. I want to say six to seven hundred thousand and we ended up purchasing a piece of equipment for about half that. And the main logic or realization of that savings was just based on the type of machine that was pursued by the current staff. As opposed to what was anticipated as a potential purchase uh when it was budgeted. So we were going through the budget cycle in twenty twenty three, where our targets kind of set on a certain type of piece of equipment. Uh as staff changed over and and the new superintendent settled in and they assessed the needs. Um those sites shift a little bit and ended up in a more uh. Uh a less expensive piece of equipment that will still meet the needs for the compost program altered landfill for several years to come. So that's where the brunt of that savings came from, uh now to fast forward to, you know, like uh any good manager would. And and Scott Davis, I want to give him accolades, is the new superintendent out there, uh just like the previous superintendent and all the great staff we have. Uh they're really good at assessing needs and forecasting what we could do um preemptively to help meet those needs. He realizes budget savings uh was pretty substantial, he also realized a pretty immediate need. Um in a couple of different areas, one of those has to do with uh the the office. And how it's, I would say, been simply neglected and and from a updating standpoint for quite some time, it's been used, it's been. Uh utilized heavily, as you can imagine with any landfill office and that environment, things um. They they get wore out after time and that's simply where we're at today. And so to accommodate uh the three full time staff that are housed in that administrative area. Plus a fourth scale operator position, plus the break room for all of the solid waste uh garbage collection drivers. And the landfill heavy equipment operators. Um it's got, the superintendent Davis was able to put together an estimate and receive quotes for updating that office space. They came in at just over about fifty thousand dollars for that work to be done. And then the more substantial improvement would be the paving of the entrance uh for the landfill site. Um really what's, that just comes down to the um. The ingress and egress for that site with all the truck traffic that we see uh throughout this winter, we had a very mild winter. Uh we had a lot of uh weather that naturally um created, you know, very mucky conditions. You know, you can blade that out, put more gravel down and rework the surface and do that, and that's exactly what the staff do out there today. Um but you could also take another step in the direction of improving that site. For a long time to come, that we'll be operating on this site for, you know, decades yet. As we continue to build new cells for refuse disposal at the landfill. So this money would not be a a waste to where five years down the road, we'd have to relocate the scale house or anything like that. This would be locked at this location for quite some time, so looking at the long term functionality of it to add paving to that access. Uh you know, the the community, I believe, uh went to the expense of paving that road all the way out to the landfill. From highway eighty one, but we neglected to address any of the onsite paving needs, um however long ago that was. That's what this would do is it extend that evening from the the road, from the access out into the site up to the scale and next to the scale house. And uh if you can imagine all the the customers coming and going with the truck traffic, the staff's vehicles. Uh the city vehicles, the garbage, city garbage trucks and things of that nature, not having to work in the the muck and mud. That oftentimes otherwise is prevalent at that area. That's what this would address in in that paving area would include um up to the scale and adjacent to the scale window. And uh both the the entrance and exit aisles into and out of the site. Um the estimates we've got for that have uh. Are to the tune of about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so it's more substantial expenditure. Um but based on everything that we've, we've talked about, discussed and analyzed for needs out there, we felt this one was important enough. Uh to coincide with all the other site improvements that superintendent Davis has also been working on with staff. You may, you've probably seen uh the public service announcements related to the safety at the site. Uh we're managing better how some of the, uh all of the users of the site are backing into the face of the landfill. The active burial uh berry area where the heavy machinery is being operated. We've implemented some safety protocol there and all the trucks are stacked when they're dumping. Rules on how how people can or can't get out of their vehicles and appropriate places to do that. Uh PPE requirements, uh personal protective equipment with hard hats and vests when they're out of their vehicles. Uh all in effort just to make sure that safety is of the utmost priority out there at the site. I've also gone through an effort of updating the signage out there, you know, it's something simple that goes a long way in helping direct traffic, direct to customers. Whether they're recurring, frequent commercial haulers or a a one off resident that happens to have a truck full of. Of uh remodeled garbage they want to get rid of out at the landfill. Um so this is along those same efforts of of trying to clean up the site and make it all the more usable, usable. And user friendly and efficient for all the operations out there.
Thank you very much. Chair needs a motion to approve the reallocation of. The solid waste fund and capital budget savings. I still think that should be approval to reallocate savings from the fiscal year two thousand twenty four solid waste fund capital budget, but. That's all right. But either way, it's an approval to allocate this money. Motion made by Councilman Peters. Second by Councilman Tupper, open it up for questions and comments, Councilman Danforth.
B, are we approving the reallocation of the four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars? Or are we reallocating just those dollars on the two projects that?
Which is three hundred and eighty, hundred and five thousand dollars.
Hundred and five thousand dollars difference um between what they're requesting right now versus what the estimated savings is.
Uh yes, Councilman Danforth, uh the intent would be that at a minimum, the the two projects, the paving and the. The administrative updates are funded, uh which would equate to the three hundred and eighty one some thousand.
Okay, because the motion is to allocate. The full savings amount, which was before eighty seven, which I personally, I don't like that idea. You know, to me, it's a blank check if we do that, I think I'm fine with the two projects there, they're coming out of the the enterprise fund. Uh after the purpose, it pays for itself through bees and such. Um but I think. The way the motion is stated, we're approving the moving of four hundred and eighty seven thousand.
City manager Mac?
Um I, well. We could add the dollar amount in there if that, if that provides a level of comfort, but we do say in the motion to proceed with the proposed capital improvements that are. Outlined below, so I think that does cover it, that the three thirty, estimated three thirty for the uh. Paving project and the fifty two thousand for the um office work. Um but if if you'd prefer to have the the dollar amount in there, um that's fine. Doesn't matter either way, we'll have to bring the paving project to you um to award a bid anyway.
I'm gonna defer to this Councilman Danforth first before I go to Director Vonai.
As long as we all know what what we're proving, if it's, if it truly is the projects. Um then let's move on with it, and it's not the four eighty seven. Um we're gonna count on you, the the bean counter over there, to to keep us on the straight and narrow. And and make sure that we aren't writing a a blank check for for any extra of those dollars, so.
Director Vonai? Um yeah, to that point, as far as an exact number, I would just heed caution not to set an exact number because of the bid factor for that paving. Uh staff, we were actually gonna bid a asphalt with a concrete alternate. And which would help drive competition in the bid, um and we would bring that bid forward to the council ultimately for approval. Um but yes, generally speaking, these are the two projects we intend to move forward with. The exact numbers, I wouldn't necessarily base off these estimates, the quote for the office work is pretty exact. But the bid for the paving could be plus or minus and would just not want to set that number errantly uh to tie our hands later on.
Finance officer Bob Zien?
Thank you, Mayor, I think the one thing that I'll probably suggest, just because now we've done the brush truck and we have this project. And we're kind of moving some stuff around early on in the year, um I'll let the project get bid, the kind of the quote get done for the other work. Then I'll bring it in enough to cover the projects um through a a budget transfer essentially. And then we'll take care of the supplement in the same time, just so everybody's kind of on the same page because it just happened. So instead of waiting till the end of the year, if that works, so thank you.
Councilman Shippy?
Thank you, Mayor, uh Mr. Vonai, that was a good lead into what I thought I had, a question I had was the, you mentioned all alternate. Um concrete, because I'm just envisioning. Paving that, because I know the area pretty well, I've been out there a fair amount and. When a work comes with the road on the way out there, um you know, there's always this crown effect, if you over the water runoff. Does that affect the longevity of of, for example, asphalt, um if if we don't have, you know, I'm assuming I'm asking a dumb question. Because you're in engineering, you probably figured this all out, but for say, me trying to get to understand this project, you know, for the the quality of that road, how long it's going to last? Because once you pay something, you know, I know the alleys in town, once you paved them, my alley isn't paved, but most everyone and others are around me and. And they break up and there's a lot more maintenance to them and, you know, was it better to pay them or not pay them, you know, twenty years later, how many years later? So on this, I guess, if you could answer the question of the, you know, the roads been holding up, but when we pave this, is this gonna, you know, industry standard? You know, the water runoff, is it, I can't, it's hard to see me engineering that to where you're gonna, you know. Where it's gonna have the proper, I suppose you'll build it up, I'm sure you figured it all out, so just, I guess, answer, answer, answer my babbling.
Director Vonai, the question is babbling?
Absolutely, to the to the babbling question, I would respond uh more babbling, so. No, um no such thing as a dumb question in my, in my book anyway, so I do appreciate that. We would, this really would be no different than a parking lot paving project, for example, you know, we just paved uh the ice arena parking lot. You got a pretty expansive, massive pavement there, that's not like a narrow roadway with the clean crown where it runs off to each side. You've got to redirect that water in all different kinds of directions depending on where you're at on the site. So we would do the exact same thing with the uh the surveying and the setting the grades for this paved area. Because it's not a clean, narrow strip of roadway, it's an expansive uh broad area. And and direct the water appropriately, we do have to make sure there is an appropriate grade in in certain, in all. Uh areas to direct the water, we don't want to create any ponding or any burn baths or things like that on our pavement. Um so that's where uh the survey and setting of the paving stakes and things like that will be very important.
All right, yeah, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Bueller? Yep, Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, I I didn't think you were gonna let me talk anymore, no.
No.
But could Dan Shuddy repeat what he said again? Just kidding, Councilman, just kidding, no, you know, I thought for for a long time. Um that we do need to do something for the surface out at the landfill, I I do agree and I. If if concrete um is close in cost, I would certainly go, it would be my recommendation anyway to go to the concrete if possible. Because of the, all the trucks that traffic in and out, stop and go, um I think that would pay off in the long run. Thank you.
All right, thank you, any further questions or comments, council, Councilman Shuddy, did you have something more?
Just basically, yeah, yeah, thank you, Bruce, for clarifying my my thoughts there.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the reallocation of budget savings. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay, finance officer Bob Zien, please call the roll.
Okay, Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion carries, we're on to last item for the night, twelve B. I'm going to ask for a change of language, to change it to approval for the mayor to appoint a committee on commercial lake zoning. And I'll explain the reason why and is just because we do have the councilmen who have agreed to be on this committee. But we do not yet have all of the plant commissioners who have agreed to be on the committee. So I think as long as the council knows what we're doing here and knows who the council representation is going to be. I I don't feel right making a motion to say like I'm going to appoint all of the members tonight, when I don't know who the plant commissioners are. So if council is okay with that, um then I just want to make the motion cleaner, which is. Just to say the approval, uh approval for the mayor to appoint a committee on commercial lake zoning. And I guess for explanation, I will go to myself and Councilman Danforth. Um so first off, I will say, after the joint meeting between the plant commission and the city council, there was much conversation. Going on as to how to interpret going forward with amending the CL zoning. And Councilman Danforth and Commissioner Kays were having conversations. As were myself and city manager Mac and several members of the staff. And there was a meeting last Friday between Commissioner Danforth, Commissioner, I mean, Councilman Danforth, Commissioner Kays. City manager Mac, I was unable to be there, but I was aware a little bit of what they were asking for. And actually, it was an idea that I had proposed to the councilman and commissioner ahead of time as well. So we were all thinking the same thing, which is, it is just fine to appoint a committee to take the time to explore these. On their own and bring it back to another joint committee rather than have further joint committees to discuss it. So the idea was to focus the work a little better before we bring it back to joint commissions, but I guess that's my interpretation. I don't want to speak for Councilman Danforth, but it's definitely as much his idea as it is anybody else's, so Councilman Danforth, would you like to give something?
Mayor, I don't have any strong feelings on this topic, but uh just be. But as you know, I do, and uh we've had some, I think, what are some really good discussion. Um our goal is to set a deadline that that this committee can, we can have good, active discussion. Um we want to be able to make sure during that process that we are keeping both the council and the plant commission abreast of. Any results coming out of uh any meetings. Um our our hope is that when um that when the work of this committee is done. We need to understand this committee has no authority, you know, they have a responsibility, the responsibility is to evaluate the the CL zoning, see where it takes us. Um so there's no, no preconceived agenda as to what the outcome will be, other than having gone through the discussion and to see where we get. Our hope then is that we will have representation from this committee. That will actually make presentation to the plant commission and presentation to the full council. Um we've found that as simple as this may seem. Um it's difficult, because you you need to have discussion and understand why and how and who and. And so um there'll be a lot of discussion, you know, uh and so that presentation, we're hoping uh will occur. Uh we're trying to set that July, maybe into August deadline for having that back. Uh to the plant commission and and the uh um the council. Um and I think what's really important to that, these will be open meetings, they'll be, the agendas will be published. We're gonna try to set up specific schedule all along so that it's whatever time of the day on such and such a day. And you know, every other week, whatever that is, to get through, uh probably made for anywhere from an hour, hour and a half to two hours in any given day. Um we want to be able to come back and and explain fully what was considered. What's the proposals, if there's options on proposal, what those are, what wasn't considered and why, we want to be able to fill in the blanks, so to speak. Um but we think that's very important and um. And I and I look forward to getting it going and just having a good discussion with it and I, Mayor, did you state who from the council was going to?
I did not, but you can.
Okay, uh what we've done is uh we've talked, uh actually talked to um city manager Mac. Um and uh Todd Kays and what we have asked for is support. and Todd Case, and we have asked for his support from Lynn Jurins. It's, it's his ward that this is in. And we've asked Kyle Peters to be a part of it. You know, Kyle's fairly new to the community. He's also into development, which brings a different perspective to, to this as well. So we'll see who ends up participating from the plan commission standpoint. But one thing is very, very important is the public will have the ability to come to these meetings and listen. These are work session type meetings. We're not going to sit there and take hours and hours of input, but that's up to us at the time, if that's something that we want to break protocol with. But in the end, the county, the, the community will have a say like any other ordinance. Or, and that is they'll have a, a, an opportunity to bite at the apple at the plan commission. And it'll have two opportunities on a first read, second read at, at our council meeting. So there should be plenty of opportunity for the public to, to look at what is presented and say what works, what doesn't work. And they can be at those meetings here firsthand along the way if they'd like.
So yes, so Chair will entertain a motion to approve or to approve the mayor appointing a committee on commercial lake zoning. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Danforth. Open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Peters. Maybe a question for Councilman Danforth. Do we know all the members on the committee? Is somebody from the planning and zoning besides Mr. Case, who else? And then location? And then we just, well, and you can speak to this, but I think we're going to try to line up these meetings with council meetings on Mondays, right? Maybe just talk a little bit about that.
Well, what we're trying to do, we've gotten a little bit of input. I, I cannot answer who is, is going to participate from the plan commission standpoint. It, it, it's really hard to get things to work together on, so that you can get people to be there at each meeting. And that's really what we need. We need a commitment to be there at, you know, let's just say it's in every other week. So we're going to try to look at what the needs are. And then we're going to try to then establish the dates and such. Ideally, I know you do have a heavy travel schedule. You're in town and very committed to the council meetings. Mondays works really well at that point. So now exactly when, I know at one point we talked about a morning. City major Mac had suggested we do it just prior to the, to the council meetings. You know, from my perspective, doesn't matter. But I think we may need to take into consideration the planning commission members and their ability to leave work to come and participate. So we don't know what that's going to be exactly or where that's going to be. We don't have enough whiteboards.
I know, it's endless.
That's old city manager Mac. I would buy one for us. But, but anyway, so what we need to do is we need to, to get some input. Because I, I think Mr. Case, as he has had some discussion, there's been individuals that, that we're not able to, or I'm not sure what the definition of that is, that, that to participate. What I don't know is that because of the schedule that we just threw out there or what, we need to do some research on that. We'll figure it out.
With that said, and I talked with Commissioner Case today, and he was kind of taking the lead from the plan commission standpoint. And he has just not been able to finalize who will be participating from the plan commission at this time. So with that said, we will take an amended motion to approve the committee and an allocation from Councilman Danforth's bank account for whiteboards. Approval for the committee. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Beeler, anything?
Nope.
All right. And I would just say, however it comes about, I was always a stickler for saying anybody can bring forward an amendment. I'm okay with it coming from a committee as just as much as I was okay coming from a particular councilman. I just want an actual proposal brought forward. That's the intent of the committee. Because you bring something forward, you have a debate, you vote it up, you vote it down, it's resolved and you move on. So, and that's was my desire and the committee will get us there. And I think that's great. So with that said, any further discussion on this? Motion is to approve, is approval for mayor to appoint a committee on commercial lake zoning. All those in favor will say aye, I will say nay. Finance officer Bob Z, please call the roll.
Hey, Shuddy.
Aye.
Tupper.
Aye.
Beeler.
Aye.
Danforth.
Aye.
Pauline.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We are done with that. We, with the agenda for tonight, we are on city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. I will lead it off and just like to wish a happy birthday to our current councilman, Dan Shuddy, and also our former councilman Glenn Vilhauer. So we will save the public the agony of having us sing happy birthday and having that recorded for posterity. But I just wanted to say happy birthday, and I'm sure that we are all in favor of that. So.
A quick note on that. It would mean a lot if the mayor would sing happy birthday.
After the meeting, that will be fine.
Maybe to you.
Any further announcements? Yep, Councilman Tupper.
I know we're a little early, but spring is coming right around the corner and hopefully real quick, but Fourth of July fireworks ain't too far off. So I'll be out, out and about seeing everybody and driving the girls over in the finance office crazy. And they do a tremendous job for me. It does all the other departments. So time to start thinking about it, I guess. So.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Any further announcements? City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. First, a reminder that we have the street facility tours on Wednesday. For those of you that are participating, you can meet us at the Watertown Street Facility at eight o'clock Wednesday morning. We, also on Wednesday at the airport, they're doing a full-scale drill. So if you would like to see that, please let Kelly know. She's coordinating the access, if you will, to the site specifically for media. I think she's supposed to be there at nine forty-five. By nine forty-five, if you want access to view that. We do have a work session on Monday, the eighth at four P M. Now I wanted to give you an overview of that agenda. The members of our park and rec board will be joining us for that meeting as we will be presented with the draft version of the master park plan that the park for Dusty and his team, the community has been working on for quite some time with Stockwell engineers. So Stockwell will be here to present that and give you all an opportunity to engage in a discussion around it. We also will give an overview of the two thousand twenty-five budget process. We're going to roll out some, nothing for you all to make, don't need to make a decision on it. I wanted to share some changes that we are making internally as it relates to our agenda procedures and, and processes. We're going to talk about a two thousand twenty-five ambulance purchase, a two thousand twenty-five solid waste purchase, the golf cart ordinance. I did send out some draft language that Chief Toomey has prepared. I sent that out to you all today. Pickleball, someone's been asking about that. And the highway twenty transfer from the DOT has been requested of us. So that is the agenda for the eighth. It, it, it should be a full meeting. So we'll make sure there's snacks so you all don't get too terribly hungry. And happy birthday to Councilman Shuddy and former Councilman Vilhauer. Stand by for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. We have no motion to go into executive session or reason. Therefore, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Good night and God bless you. Water town.
I guess.